Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's my pleasure to call to order the Tiburon Town Council meeting, the special meeting for Monday, May 22, 2023. We picked a good night to start charging for parking, this looks like. Thanks for coming. Madam Clark, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember here.
Here, councilmember Welner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Here.
And Mayor Ryan.
Here. Thank you. So before we get into the meat of the meeting, we're going to start off with some administrative items and because it's a special meeting, I don't need to do general public comment, but we do have a consent slate, which are sort of administrative items that we need to approve or adjudicate on before we get into the action items in the public hearing. So at this time, I need to know if anybody on the council needs to pull a consent item. And I'll start by saying that I need to pull consent item one, so that I can recuse myself from that item because my property is within the 500 feet of the subject. Anyone else? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who want to pull one of the consent item or want to comment on one of the consent items? Did you see anyone online?
I do. I do have one hand raised online. I will recognize Yvonne Mader. She just went away. Being none.
Okay, great. So at this point, I'll accept to I'd like to accept a motion to approve the consent minus consent item one.
So moved. Second.
All in favor of approving the consent item, say aye.
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 Great, so that passes. And at this point, I have to leave the meeting while Vice Mayor takes over to take care of item CC1. Thanks.
So we've already reached out for public comment, and so it is time for the council to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. We now may recall the mayor, or should we just move on? To the rest. Literally.
I was only halfway to Sam's. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this point, we move on to the public hearing. And
I didn't do the rest of the consent calendar.
We did it. Yeah, thanks. So obviously, this is the public hearing on the Tiburon 2040 General Plan and the Environmental Impact Report. Could we start off with a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, mayor and council members in public. Happy to see everybody here tonight. So let me try to wait a minute till it gets. Thank you. So this is the Town of Tiburon Council Public Hearing to consider the adoption of a resolution certifying the Environmental Impact Report, adopting CEQA findings in the Statement of Overriding Considerations for Significant and Unavoidable Impacts, and approving a mitigation monitoring program, and also adoption of a resolution recommending the General Plan 2040, including the 2023 and through 2031 housing element, and those exhibits have been provided in your staff report as three and four. Next slide, please. So I think it's important to first say, what is this general plan update and why do we do it? So this is an update to our 2005 plan. It's part of what the government code requires each jurisdiction to adopt and maintain a general plan. Typically, cities update their general plan every 20 years. The town is now initiating the process in the initiated, excuse me, initiated the process in the fall of 2020 and hired a work and associates. And with that, I I'm going to introduce she, I will continue my presentation, but I think it's important to first of all acknowledge Christina Rourke and Associates for their participation in this. I couldn't do it without the excellent team that I had. So Christina Rourke is to my left, as well as Christina Erwin from De novo. They did the CEQA analysis. I also online have WRT, who was our main consultant on the downtown portion of the plan, as well as the sea level rise, and produced the entire document, which I think came out very beautifully. So I just wanted to make sure, and oh, and Ricardo Horta, who put together our diversity element, worked with the community to provide outreach to various parts of the community, provided us with bilingual and a great deal of translation, so we could contact a greater majority of the community. So with that, I'll continue, but they're here if we have questions. This is the entire general plan. I know most of the audience is concerned or more focused on the housing element, but this is an entire general plan. Next slide, please. So what have we done to date? This has been a project that we've been working on since 2020. And in November and December, we held stakeholder interviews. We launched our website. We had sent out a town mailer and produced our first survey. And then between March 2021 and April 2023, we had eight workshops which were held. And from 2020 to 2023, we held 16 town council meetings for various portions of the general plan. And from January 2021 through November 2022, we had nine planning commission meetings. We also, from November 2020 to 2021, three post meetings. And from October 2021 and October 2022, we had five DITF meetings. Each one of these workshops that we held, or each workshop that we held, was followed by an online survey and all supporting documents have been uploaded to the web, Create Tiburon 2040. In addition to the surveys, there were focus groups were conducted in Spanish to be sure that we had heard, as I mentioned before, the underrepresented community members. Next slide, please. So what is encompassed in this general plan? I think I want to make sure we don't forget there's a number of other elements in the general plan, such as land use, downtown, housing, diversity, equity and inclusion, mobility, noise, sustainability, conservation, open space, parks and recreation, safety and resilience and resiliency. And those are part of what we had as part of the workshops that we went through for the last two years. Next slide, please. Also, because this is this general plan is considered a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, a draft EIR, an environmental impact report, was prepared and was circulated for a 45-day period ending, which just ended on May 1st. We received a great deal of comments and we've responded to those. In addition, the EIR discussed alternatives to the general plan, and we selected the preferred alternative, the project, which was what we looked at for the analysis of the EIR. The final EIR provides responses to those comments and includes a set of mitigation measures and a statement of overriding consideration for the town council to consider. As I stated in in the beginning, there's resolutions that contain that language. Next slide, please. So I know most of us have been spending a lot of time and concentrated on the housing element, and I'm sure that most of the individuals here in the audience are concerned about that as well. So as we, as I have stated, the housing element is a required element of the general plan, and it must be updated every eight years. And what was included in that housing element and that we put together, whereas through goals, policies and quantitative objectives, and scheduled programs that preserve, improve and develop housing. And we identified and analyzed existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community. We also identified adequate sites that are zoned and available within the eight-year housing cycle to meet the local government's fair share of regional housing needs at all income levels. We also went through a process where we, those sites were evaluated to meet the affirmatively further fair housing. We must have this reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development to determine whether or not the element complies with state law. And that it's internally consistent with other elements of the general plan. And we include, we must include programs to promote housing opportunities and meet the regional housing need allocation. Next slide, please. So similar to other communities, the state has allocated housing, housing units to all communities, and to Tiburon, the number of housing units required is 639. As I stated previously, and I showed you through the timeline, town staff and policymakers have been meeting for the past two years to consider housing sites and densities. The town has submitted two draft housing elements for the State Department of Housing and Community Development to consider and respond to. HCD has provided extensive comments to the town. HCD provided us a response to staff in our first go around that limited the number of SB9 units that the town could count, which then resulted enough us having to come back and respond by considering additional sites. And after much discussion and a response to the HCD comments, the town council directed staff to include Site H to make up for that shortfall from losing those SB9 sites, as well as some accessory dwelling sites. So S Site H was then included as an opportunity site. The analysis conducted for the EIR included all housing sites. Next slide, please. So the next thing that we went and did after we finished the circulation, we had responses to comments, we had done quite a bit of analysis and outreach, is we held a planning commission hearing on May 10. And the planning commission heard public testimony and brought it back for discussion, and they adopted two different resolutions. The first resolution was to recommending recommending the council, the town council certify the EIR, make CEQA findings of fact, adopt a statement of overriding consideration, and adopt the mitigation monitoring reporting program, and consider adoption of alternative three therein as the preferred alternative. And two, they adopted a resolution recommending the town council repeal Tiburon 2015 to 2023 housing element, adopt the general plan 2040, including the 2023 to 2031 housing element, but consider the replacement of Site H with the sites, with the site identified in alternative three, or the sites, excuse me, identified in alternative three. Next slide. And I wanted to make a note, and this was brought to our attention by a member of the public, that the final certification for the alternative, alternative, looking at alternative three or what that was in the resolution. There was an error in our staff report on page nine, paragraph three, under environmental review. It was inserted in error. And the certification, that should be omitted, but within the EIR resolutions, that is correct. And instead, it should read alternative three, the downtown density alternative, increase potential development in downtown by allowing 40 to 50 units per acre on all mixed-use sites in the housing element sites inventory, and reducing development potential of Site H to which is currently, which it currently permits. Site H is currently zoned RPD, which permits one unit per acre. Currently, there are two single-family homes that exist on the site, so an additional seven will be permitted. So I just wanted to note that. So it was in the staff report, but the resolutions are correct. Next slide, please. So finally, what are your next steps? So following, or our next steps, following the adoption of the general plan as presented tonight, staff will submit the adopted housing element to HCD for certification. Staff will also return to the planning commission and town council with the proposed zoning amendments and objective design standards to implement the rezoning identified in the housing element, and adopt a resolution recommending to the town council adoption of the general plan. Next slide, please. So staff recommends that the town council tonight, what are we asking you to do? So staff recommends that the town council hold a public hearing, take public testimony, and adopt a resolution of the town council certifying the Environmental Impact Report for the Town of Tiburon General Plan 2040, adopting CEQA findings of fact, adopting a statement of overriding consideration, and adopting the mitigation monitoring report program. And also adopt a resolution repealing the 2005 general plan and adopting the general plan 2040, including the 2023 to 2031 housing element. Next slide. And we're available for any questions to clarify. Or whatever the council wishes.
Thank you very much. Do any of the council members have questions for staff? Please, councilmember Welner.
Yeah, this is kind of a nuts and bolts question. So the council approved and staff sent to HCD the first draft of the housing element. And we received comments back. And so then staff and with council's approval revised that, and we submitted a second version, which we then got comments back on. My question is, on the on the general plan website, when it says second draft of the housing element, that's the one that's available. Is that the one that was sent and received comments back on, or is that yet a new version? That is now the one to be submitted? Because the reason I'm asking is is there a version that addresses the various comments? You know, HCD had a lot of comments about putting in information about various things. Is there a version available and online that is the version that we would be submitting? After approval?
I believe that should be up there, that the new changes and the responses to comments.
Okay, because the
We're going to look right now to make sure.
I reviewed the version that's on the website, but I want to make sure that that is, in fact, not the version.
There's, there's a, the third draft is on the Create Tiburon 2040 website. And then it was also included in the council's packet.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's anywhere else on the town's website. Because I just I just maintain the Create Tiburon 2040 website, but the the latest version with the response to the HCD's comments and the second letter is on the CreateTiburon2040.org website.
So that's the one where on the cover of that, when it says revised draft housing element, that's the third draft.
That's correct.
And that was also attached in our packets.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I guess I never talked to you about this, but you're reasonably confident that we've addressed the specific issues that HCD raised in our response to our original draft. Like their second set of comments. We feel good about having addressed those.
Staff believes we addressed them appropriately in response. We can't know. We can't know until we we actually hear back from them, but we have had discussions with them and we have addressed those comments to the best of our abilities.
Great, thanks. Vice Mayor Fredericks.
You probably can't answer this question, but is there any expectation or even requirement of how prompt HCD response to the latest submission will be?
They have 60 days from the time of our submittal, and they usually lose every single one of those days. We usually receive comment on the 60th day.
So I had a question. So hopefully, whatever, whatever happens will be certified. However, if it is not, will you then come back to town council with the revisions, or will staff be putting those revisions through?
So the process has been that we've been bringing that to you with the revisions. So I would believe that's what we would do. I would not feel comfortable to do that without council seeing our responses and understanding what we're doing going forward.
Thank you. So this is another question. So that means the amount of time we are under risk of a builder's remedy is really in part dependent on how prompt HCD responds.
If I may, Vice Mayor Fredericks, members of the council, so the so-called builder's remedy, which is a provision in the Housing Accountability Act, applies for the period of time prior to adoption of your housing element. So if the town doesn't have an adopted housing element within the statutorily required timeframe, the town is at risk of a builder's remedy project. Certification is a different issue. And the resolution that you have in your packet, excuse me, before you tonight, includes responses to all of HCD's comments. It includes a chart of where in the housing element law all the requirements lay and where in the housing element those have been addressed in order to allow the town council to make those findings that the element does substantially conform to the housing element law. So the adoption of the housing element creates a very strong argument that you have a legally compliant housing element and therefore provides a defense to a builder's remedy project.
So any action we take tonight has the potential of reducing that risk.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public comment, and I just want to say a few things before that. So first of all, thank you for all your written submissions, both for the planning commission meeting, which we've had made available to us and for this meeting. That's very helpful for giving us background and context. But for speaking tonight, you're limited to three minutes. So when you come and say your name, then you'll have three minutes. And that will be a hard stop at three minutes. So plan accordingly based on what you're going to say. I strongly encourage you to, you know, give us relevant and new information, and you don't necessarily have to all repeat the same thing. I also appreciate that there will be people who have opposing ideas, but I I encourage all of you to recognize that I would bet that 99% of us are on the same side of things in terms of us thinking that this is sort of an egregious example of state overreach and that we are fighting against that, not against each other. And everyone is just hoping to have the best outcome with that in mind. So again, that's the way the public comment is going to work. Three minutes that you get to speak. And we'll take, we'll ask the people in chambers to speak first, and then after everyone has had an opportunity to speak here, who wants to speak, we'll take the people who are online to speak. So just, we don't, given that we've only been back in person for a couple of meetings, I don't know, so we know that we have a good method for getting people prioritized. So and how have we done it in the past? I don't even remember. I guess there was a bias in this.
I think
I don't think we've ever had this many people come to a meeting before, so.
So
Maybe, maybe line up.
Yeah, so if you just want to line up, come down the middle and line up. And, and, and and then, thank you. And then instead of all having to stand, you could sort of sit while other people are seeing and just remember the order in which you were lined up, if that makes any sense. We'll do that. So just again, repeat, please state your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, town council, and thank you for three minutes.
Yeah, welcome.
Appreciate that. Because I was going to try to do it in two, and I didn't know if I could. So I first, I just want to briefly take issue with something that Ms. Wagner said about the effect of adoption tonight. I think it's a really debatable question as to what will cut off the builder's remedy. HCD and the statute itself says that what cuts off the builder's remedy is certification of compliance by HCD. There is a defense that can be raised that adoption by the town council that it's substantially compliant would be a defense in a builder's remedy lawsuit, but that's different than what the statute says. I would like to take my time to talk about only two units for Site H, which is a little different than what I've spoken about before in my comments. You have one decision, I think, to make tonight, and that is which housing element has a better chance of getting a certificate of compliance from HCD within the next 60-day review period, GP 2040 or alternative three. This is really not the time to decide which housing element will please which residents, only which one will please HCD and the builder's remedy. If Tiburon resubmits the 2040 housing element, the GP 2040 element, HCD will evaluate that based on the new information that it didn't have before about the site when the last draft was submitted under this standard, whether, and I quote, "Site H has a realistic and demonstrated potential for development during the planning period for the number of units designated," close quote. That's the standard. And I think the answer to that is clearly, no, it does not have that realistic and demonstrated potential for redevelopment during the next, during the end of the planning period. I don't please, don't believe for a second that HCD will look at this at a programmatic level and ignore site-specific information. It didn't do that for the downtown parcels, and it won't do it for Site H. So you have to submit alternative three if you want to end the builder's remedy, but with one small change to be safe. I would direct the staff to identify Site H for only two more units, not seven. Because the staff has twice reported that Site H cannot support more than four units total due to its site constraints, and it already has two units. I would hate to see you submit alternative three, which I do believe is compliant, but identify Site H for seven units, only to have HCD come back after another 60 days and ask the town to demonstrate how it is that it can support seven units when the staff has said site constraints limited to four. Four minus the two there are two. So that's the safe route. To deal with downtown residents' objections to higher density, I would also please ask you to direct the staff. Well, I've had three people who will seat him in, and I'm almost done, I promise you. Please direct the staff immediately, not by the end of 2023, as proposed in Response 18 to the New Housing Element responses, to reach out to Tiburon's residents now about more flexible ADU ordinance and solicit written expressions of interest, and of course, pre-zone and fast-track the annexation of Site H. Tiburon has seven more months to act, and that's really the win-win situation for everybody. Thank you very much.
Who would like to speak next? I can't believe everyone came here tongue-tied tonight. Thank you. Yes.
Councilmembers. My name is Mark Holmstrom. I live in Paradise K. First of all, I know this is a tough decision, and we're all in alignment that we want to keep our community as the same as we have it. For a job, I actually run a consultancy for a commercial real estate company. We actually design cities around the world. And when you think about the core of what we're trying to do, we're trying to create a broader demographic, a different group, a broader community in our environment that has access to the basic things like transportation, food, bike pass, all the basic things that people need. Site H is not an appropriate place for the type of of people that we're suggesting should join our community. It's not, I'm a big biker, as many of you guys probably know. It's one of the most dangerous roads in the world. I've been run off the road. We've had cars go off the road. We've had people killed. If the, if the, the town of Tiburon wants to get a piece of property that's outside of the jurisdiction, the town of Tiburon needs to be responsible to create a tremendous amount of infrastructure to support that decision as well. Bike lanes, sewer systems, water systems, there's a whole bunch of things that are not included in the plan, and it's a big problem. We cannot take and have a bunch of people show up in a very rural place and expect them to be able to get to school, get to the grocery store, the most basic things. On, in addition to that, it is, the land sits on a coastal piece of property. BCDC is very clear about the use of property and rights. My guess is a big chunk of that property will become public use. When we had a similar issue in Paradise K, where I was homeowners president, the marina wanted to extend their, the marina. We had, the marina had to give up half of their land to the county to make a state park down on the end and give public access. So we have people fighting over land rights and who actually owns the land out there. We have BCDC, it's going to ask for an actual park along there. It's just not the right place. You already have a plan. It's put a fourth floor downtown. It's the right answer. All the, and the last thing I would just suggest, the beautiful slide that shows all the public time that we've spent to review this. No one in the county was involved in any of those conversations. That was all done at the city level. It was not done with the county. It was not done with all the residents that surround that piece of property. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, Mark. Uh, anybody else? So if nobody else is going to speak, oh, okay, go ahead.
My name is Dorian Curtis. I guess. I understand that the people who live near the Paradise Drive property don't want any development in their area and I understand that they have. Many reasons that would be considered perhaps less valid and other reasons that are valid. But there are concerns with downtown we've been talking about for years. That's the reason why last. August at a town council meeting, when hundreds of people made comments, well over a hundred. Participated. It was decided that it made sense to put some breaks on how much housing we have downtown. As it stands right now, if we don't change anything, the majority of the housing is downtown. All of the low income housing is downtown with the bonus densities that that carries. I just learned for the first time today that we're talking about not increasing it to what I thought was the former plan of the original. Alternative of forty to forty five, but apparently now we're looking at forty to fifty. I haven't even run the numbers on that. As best I can figure out. Realistically, because the numbers included in the chart. Go on the low end of thirty. I mean, we're already looking between us and Belvedere. At about seven hundred housing units and now we're looking to add, I I don't even know how many. It looks like this could be a hundred and fifty more, or I haven't done the math. If you go up to fifty. We have severe traffic problems. They have their own issues. We have our issues, severe congested traffic. When I came home today, it was bumper to bumper. All the way to downtown. We are going to have serious parking issues. And we're going to have serious concerns with emergency vehicles and emergency evacuation. We're talking about now increasing this to four and surely five stories. Because if we're going to put all these additional ones down here, the more floors you add, the more opportunity for a density bonus. This, there's an area. In Marin City that has a housing development, they wanted to have forty one units and because of the density bonus, they now get seventy four. There has to be some consideration. Of when enough is enough to put all downtown and HCD does not want it all downtown. And you've you've seen comments, one of them was from a Jennifer Harmon. If we we have, we haven't zoned or any multifamily housing outside of downtown. As far as I know of in all of Tiburon. I I think that it's premature to to conclude. That this site is not feasible. They will have an opportunity when they develop a plan. It's going to, it's going to be run through the SEQA process, which we would not be run through down here because we have the high density, which is exempt. From SEQA. They're going to get a proper review when they have a real plan in place and you see whether you can mitigate it.
And and please wrap up your remarks.
I I I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Schaub. I live in town. In my first go around as a Tiburon resident, I was at the age of twenty two. The youngest member of the design review board, believe it or not. And the reason I wanted to be on the review board back then was because I was concerned about the development of what was the railroad property at that time. Before they put in the large condominium complex. I was born in Nantucket Island and in the nineteen fifties and sixties, a man named Walter Bynneke came in and bought up seventy downtown properties. Nantucket has one of the oldest historic districts of the country. It goes back to the sixteen hundreds. He could have done anything he wanted to do with those properties, but what he did was he preserved. And restored the existing ones and he built a new Marina and other areas that were consistent with the design ethic going back centuries. What I envisioned was for this town was to. Kind of give that area a feeling like Main Street or Arc Row. Mixed use development. Open to the public with lots of green space. But not just cutting the town in half and having one development here and the rest of the town there. The reason I bring this up now is because I'm concerned about how we're going to view downtown Tiburon. Especially if we talk about four story buildings. We all know what the implications of that are. I'm was very disappointed at the approval of this building. Between Arc Row and Main Street. It's not creative in the least. It does not mirror Main Street or Arc Row. It, in my view, will sit out like a sore thumb and that's where I think we have to be very careful. About how we envision this community. Once we get to the point of developing this entire area over here, for example. What's it going to be organically? What do we want in this community? Do we want architecture that's inspiring and, you know, people who want to go there and be a part of it? Do we want to have businesses that are available to all people, not just a supermarket that's. For those who make enough money to be able to go there. That's my, that's my point. And it is my hope and expectation that the council will not approve anything that allows for four stories where, of course, you'd have. Would block the view of the hills, would create shadows. And turn us into Sausalito. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shabb. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name is David Kiyatsko. I live up on Mar West. We have an amazing view of the town. We are reminded every day how beautiful it is, how amazing it is. I I first came to Tiburon when I was a college kid going to Guimas. I couldn't afford to be here. I barely could afford Guimas at that time and that was not too expensive. It took me till I was sixty to be able to afford coming here. And enjoying Tiburon, the beautiful downtown we have. The two stories. Is what we've had since the inception of Tiburon. For us to change it now. Would be terrible. It's it's, I under, I'm not saying we need to choose. One place or another. I think you guys need to find another resolution. The parking issue, the driving issue is serious. I was on the road this morning at eight. It took me about a half an hour to get down. Tiburon Boulevard. If we have many more houses in the downtown area, it's going to get worse. The solution is to find something where we have two lanes rather than a one lane road. And keep in mind. Tiburon is a tourist town. A lot of tourists come here and give business to the restaurants, to the stores. If we change the dynamics of what we have downtown. We're going to have fewer people coming here when it looks like every other city. So I hope you'll give some consideration to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Kiyatsko.
Hello, my name is Caesar Otundo and I moved here twenty three months ago, so I'm a newcomer. And not an old timer. So. What I, what I, I agree completely with you, Mr. Mayor. California is pushing this on us. We have to support it now. I don't know if they're changing, they're basing that on the acreage, on the people residence, because it will make a huge difference. In any case, where to find solutions. The solution is. Finding the right place. It has to be somewhere. That's. That's something that we need to deal with. I appreciate very much, though, that you started this resolution with the. Mentioning some area, some things that at some points are fundamental for me. Provide a balanced transportation system. We all complain about traffic and we all, I mean. Obviously, it's not the worst traffic in the world, but there is traffic and it will, it will increase with time. But on the other hand, if you stay on a one lane street full of turns. The traffic is not going to get any better. The real answer is the ferry, for example, if I had to get, have to go to San Francisco, I take the ferry. And so access to transportation, to basic facilities is essential for this choice. Clearly. Things are changing. More and more people are coming to California. I don't know why. And more and more people want to come to to Marin and to Tiburon. I have no idea why. Why did they move out here? In any case, we need to find, that's something is happening and we need to find the compromise and the compromise needs to take, you know, into consideration. Aspects that are essential to. Us that we are here and that the other people that would join us in this paradise.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
I'm Lynn Fox and most of you know me because I've been around here for thirty five years and I've been involved in fire prevention. I've been involved in. Every issue there is, including parking and whether we should do that or not. I'm bringing a new idea to the table, maybe not a new one, because there's been so much and I've read so much and no one can keep up with this and I happen to be a researcher. And I'm like, oh. But. Instead of going an extra story up. And all in one place, I'm representing the two thousand seniors that we have in Tiburon, I being one. I started out really young and now I'm there. And I'm having a hard time living here. And it's not like I haven't saved. It's not like I haven't done all the right things and I have a great piece of property. Well, I don't want to move. And I don't think I should have to move because I made it happen. And I worked hard and I came from a mom that raised four children and we had nothing and I was one of those people that we're looking at would have been homeless. I've also spent the last six years working with people that are truly homeless. Sausalito, that situation, Nevada, I've been out there. I've talked to them. I brought them food. They're not just. Drugies and they're not just poor people that have never done anything. Most of them are middle class and many of them are people that have owned little shops. And now they couldn't pay their rent and then they couldn't pay their rent at their home or their cars. It's not. But there are options. There are options. You don't have to take everybody and put them into Brian right downtown or any other way. But speaking for seniors, there's one area that in the last five days, I've been into the homes of about five or six seniors. They're elderly, they're sick, they own a beautiful home, three thousand square feet. They don't want to move. They're ninety years old, but they want somebody and need somebody to be in the place, but they don't want them in their space. They want to have privacy. They want to have dignity. But they have the place if they could, we as a town could come together and look into this whole ADU. Accessory dwelling units, whether you call them a granny flat or an in-law unit or whatever. And we help provide them with plans. As a matter of fact, I called myself. Because I saw something that the state of California was giving and so I called to find out about it. It was forty thousand dollars to help with the permits and everything. Within two days, all of them were taken. Two days because there are people wanting that and could afford to stay if they could afford to have a place for somebody that's there to give them attention. Not to be alone. They can yell instead of calling the paramedics and cause, what does it cost for an emergency visit?
Can you please?
It's all the time. And the last thing, I just think this is another way to look at it. It's good for everyone and it. Meets the needs of our community and the two thousand, which is almost a third of the population of Tiburon. Thank you very much.
Hey, good evening. Welcome.
My name is Robert Wolfson. I live in Paradise K. And I guess I just want to agree with and underline the comments that you've received. About the complete inappropriateness of putting ninety three units anywhere really on on Paradise Drive. You know, I'm glad somebody used the word, well, we think of Tiburon as a suburb. It's a suburban place, but clearly Paradise Drive is not suburban. It's it's rural, really. And one of the things we all love about Paradise Drive is you could be, you know, on a road in San Geronimo Valley or you could be out in West Marin somewhere. And that's the beauty of it. And of course, it is a super popular place for bicycling and. That's always a difficult thing. I bicycle there myself. But the last thing you want is to add, you know, a couple of hundred cars to what's happening already on Paradise Drive. And then there are a lot of other issues about, you know, the sewage system and safety. Ambulances, fire trucks, et cetera. It just. It's kind of an abomination, the idea of putting ninety three units in an area like that. And obviously, it's just going to add to the. Congestion, which is bad enough as it is. And I I do sympathize with the people who are talking about downtown. I mean, really. If we could have our our way, we don't even want this being forced upon us, but what can we do, you know? So it's it's difficult situation where to find some kind of a compromise, but I can certainly say that adding. A few units on site age makes sense, but ninety three units is. You know, anything over ten would really be too much. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. So we do have people online waiting to speak. Are there more speakers here? Okay, please come to the podium.
Did I jump the line? I'm sorry if I do.
Oh, no, it's all good.
So Tom Strutman from Paradise K.
Sorry, what was your last name, Tom?
Strutman.
Thank you.
So I I'm just reading the document online that you said was there. It still shows the the homes on property H. And the table, was that supposed to be removed or? Who put this together?
So this is just for public comment, so we can try to look into that after, but.
There was some confusion up here about which deck to send to the state. So I went on the website to look. You were asking which one is which. It it shows the units on on section H. Still part of it. Was that what you're expecting?
Again, we're not, this isn't a question and answer session. We will find a dress.
Yeah, so recommending H, correct? There's a hundred and ninety three units.
We'll get, we will address your point after the end of public commentary.
Yeah.
Hi, Lauren Salmeier and I live at forty six seventy Paradise Drive, so fairly near the property that were. Parcel H. I've lived there more than forty years and I can tell you, I want to echo what everyone else has said about Paradise Drive. It's extremely beautiful. But it's extremely dangerous. In the last three, four months, I've had probably three, four near misses. And it's only because we really know how to exit our driveway. But it's an extremely unsafe road to be adding this number of cars. I think at I was really. Proud and pleased that the planning commission recommended that parcel H be taken off. Because they recognize we do not have the infrastructure to really support parcel H and that number of homes. And that number of cars on Paradise Drive. For all the reasons that got brought up on May tenth at that meeting. But having lived there for forty plus years, I can tell you. There have been so many near collisions on the road between bikes and cars and those of us who. Live on Paradise Drive, we really care about the safety. Of everyone, the safety of the bikers, the safety of the cars, safety of kids. And 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 I also appreciate what everyone's saying about the downtown area because we also love the town of Tiburon. Which is why we enjoy living in this part, you know, part of California. But. I really, really hope that we will continue to accept the planning commission's recommendation to take parcel H. Out of the plan because it's extremely dangerous and there will be deaths. I'm completely sure of it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Bottom and I live on Central West. Nice to see you all this evening. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the challenge of this housing issue. That's complicated and no one's, no one in the town of Tiburon, the planning commission, the town council or residents. Of Tiburon started or wanted this issue that we're dealing with. But we are dealing with it and it's so sad to me that I feel that it's really dividing our community. Because I appreciate the issues with Paradise Drive. But I don't think they. but I don't think they really truly appreciate the problems that we're going to be facing downtown because we also have traffic issues. We passed two schools going out and coming in and we've got a lot of people that are crossing the streets. And when you add an extra multiple hundreds of cars potentially coming to and fro every day, I think that potentially creates even more danger for us. I also am sad to think that this wonderfully quaint town that I moved to about eight years ago would change so much. The character would change and the culture would change by changing downtown. And I want everybody to remember, we're not just talking about Tiburon Boulevard, but we're talking about the roads right around it and people getting to places. And so I just ask people to really think about how it's going to be terrible traffic congestion and the loss of the quaint town that we have right now. And so I'm just sad that I feel like we have a group of people that are just saying, it's a great idea, but not in my backyard. And I feel like we would be, those of us that live downtown would be battling this. These were multimillion dollar units going in, not just low and middle income. This is not, I think for most of us, an issue about, about income level, it's about density. And we would be battling this no matter what the, the income levels, the people that would be moving in. So let's try and work together rather than having this as a not in my backyard. I think we all have to share in this difficult situation together. I wish the people that were west of us who are where we have the four lanes would participate more or maybe the landowners. But I think we all have to participate in this terrible situation together and come at it as one rather than as different communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bottom.
Good evening.
Hello.
Joan Foster, thirty-four O Landing Road. I really appreciate, appreciate the dilemma that you are facing, not easy choices. However, if I was weighing choices and I had architecture and beauty on one side and safety in all its forms, traffic, fire and so forth on the other, I think I would lean a little towards safety. There's a couple of reasons because with architecture and if we have to go to four stories, architecture can be monitored. You can't unless you have the funds, build a new road and put in some sidewalks. So we have that. I think ADUs are great, I'm in the process of building one. And if the town would like to encourage ADUs, I have a lot of suggestions. I can't tell you how much went in. How much money went in before I even started. Finally, I live on Old Landing Road where the land is very similar to Site H. I can tell you, I have to keep two engineers because of soil instability on the premises. My husband was in the building trade. I can tell you, a developer, if he's getting ten percent affordable out of the total, is not going to even look at the property, even if you zoned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster.
Hi, Wendy Schern, I live in the, in the county Paradise K. And I talked about this at the, at the other meeting, I just continue to think about sort of what, why, why is a town incorporated because of all the services that are, you know, created for people who live there and so on? And I think when essentially an island of town was created over there off of Paradise Drive for some good reasons, it created these perturbations where we are now considering, you know, putting, making that town and putting our housing there. But the, you know, where do, when I called nine-one-one, Tiburon, please don't come. They come from the sheriff far away and we have our own issues related to that. For example, you know, fire and roads and so on. So I think it comes down to, it's not us versus them, but the town does create some services that are different in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for that point. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I'm Beth Gassel and I'm a property owner at forty-five oh-five Paradise Drive and I've lived in Tiburon for the last ten years with my family. My husband and I attended the planning commission meeting on May tenth where everyone had an opportunity to voice their concerns. A lot of that evening was spent discussing the concerns around Site H and specifically Paradise Drive and why it's not a viable option for the housing element. And at the end of the night, your own planning commission voted three oh to remove Site H and revisit maybe alternative three as a more suitable option. And I just really want to reinforce that we really do strongly support the town council adopting housing element alternative three as an option and leaving Site H with its current zoning. We really feel like the futures, our town's future is in your hands. And so we're really asking if you don't rezone Site H for high density housing, the infrastructure, the backside of Tiburon cannot safely accommodate this drastic of a change to our community. But if you could pre-zone and incorporate Mr. Winter's twenty-seven acre parcel that was brought to the town's attention at the planning commission meeting and continue investigating that as a viable option. It's a good location with better access to Tressel Glen. You could also investigate possibly some of those Cove and Baptist sites as well. And I think if you really spread the word to all the residents of Tiburon about ADUs and J-ADUs, I think you'd have a line out the door of people willing to consider offering their properties, myself included. I never even knew the town was seeking properties and we have a one and a half acre parcel. We'd be happy to build an ADU on it if it helped the town. So please listen to the residents of the town, we really love living here and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. So if there's nobody else who wants to speak, okay, don't be shy.
My name is Michael O'Donnell, a forty-four year resident on Paradise Drive. I read somewhere in the ark that there's about, I'm close to this, a hundred and nine communities that are being directed from somebody in Sacramento to do what you guys have to do. Ninety-three of those are in non-compliance, so something's wrong. Here's what I do, then I'll go home. The town leaders such as this council right here should get a hold of all the other town leaders in Center of Fell and Mill Valley and Larsburg and so on. And also Civic Center, the county, and get everybody together and push back a little bit saying something ain't right. When you look at a map of Tiburon Peninsula, an awful lot of it is county property. Okay, they have to be involved in this. This is a huge decision coming down the road. And one, one reason may be to get, to get together, have a big council meeting, a powwow, and say, what are we going to do as a collective whole because something's not working? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell.
Hi.
Hello, welcome.
My name is Mel Ronick and I've lived here maybe the longest time, I've been here for over fifty years. My wife had a very successful business on the boardwalk for thirty-five years, so we're locals. I wanted, I did, I wanted to say that how complex this is and the whole NIMBY theory. But I, I spent the first ten years of my life in Brooklyn and with apartment houses. And I moved to Tiburon because it was beautiful, character. And I think we have to try to find other areas as well, whether it's H on Paradise, there've got to be some other areas and I'm sure you've explored but done your homework. But maybe you have to go back to the books and look again. I mean, Blacky's pasture, part of the parking lot, the Baptist church, maybe move somewhere else. I don't know, but we, we have to do this together and I'm not saying it has to be property, you know, the H property. But we have to share the burden and it can't all be having another Brooklyn downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ronick.
My name is Gay Harris, I live at four oh five Paradise Drive. My husband and I moved from Belvedere four years ago. We love Belvedere, we had a house that was becoming too big for us as we age. We have wonderful condo in the Paradise condominiums, Bayside condominiums. And in Belvedere, we were very involved. As we get older, we're not quite as involved, so a lot of the younger people have to carry this burden. And my husband, I probably will not see Tiburon change a great deal, but a lot of you will. And in Belvedere, we have seen things that happened and people later said, how was that allowed to happen? This is what faces you people. And the gentleman that spoke two times back and Brenda Bottoms are right on. We have friends in Paradise K, we have friends in Belvedere, we have friends in Tiburon. And I don't envy you at all, but I think that more needs to be explored. And I know you're under the gun and oh, my, my one point that I was thinking, why don't the councils in California go to Sacramento and say, you come down and show us where we're supposed to build? No one, to my knowledge, has done that. They're up there in their ivory tower telling us what to do. And I think we've got to push back and I agree, it's time to stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Good evening.
Hi, everyone, my name is Sarah Min Sel. And firstly, I want to thank you all for the care and effort that you've gone into preparing for tonight and also to all the people who've offered their comments. I don't have any idea about where high density housing should go. I don't really think it should be in downtown Tiburon because there's plenty of people there raising excellent points. But I am going to give you my experience. So I live around on Paradise and I would say over the last five years, I have stopped at maybe five accidents because I'm a doctor to offer first aid while the ambulance was coming. I have personally put someone with a head injury in my car who didn't have insurance and driven him and his bike to the emergency department. I have a teenage son who I've now banned from riding on the road after being run off one time too many. And I would just ask you to think about if you put ninety-three houses there, what are you going to tell our kids? When they're trying to ride and there's many of them riding to school and I, I hate to bring it back to a mom's perspective and honestly, it's probably the same downtown, but it really scares me. And it scares me if one of the older people in my street have a heart attack and there's all of this traffic and someone can't get to their house, we already have problems with that. So I just wanted to bring that up and thank you for taking on this awful task.
Thank you, Ms. Minsel. Could everyone please turn off the ringers of their phones just so we can not be distracted? Thanks. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Shannon and I live on Old Landing Road. I agree, six hundred thirty-nine units is definitely too many for Tiburon. But right now, the council needs to submit a plan that will pass HCD scrutiny and remove the builder's remedy, that sword of Democles that's hanging over us all. Tiburon, oh, Tiburon is in this tough position right now, but you have a win within your grasp. Adopt alternative, adopt alternative three as the planning commission recommended. The plan has the best chance of certification and we all want to, we all want to preserve the character of downtown. There is a solution, the council can wait until January twenty twenty-four to rezone. In the meantime, new units can be identified and substituted for all of the added downtown density units under the no net loss rule. The twenty acre plus winter site can be incorporated and zoned to generate units. ADUs across the town can be positively promoted to generate units. Now that Tiburon has changed its policy on ADUs, some residents like we heard today are already expressing interest. Imagine the potential from a direct outreach campaign like mailers to all property owners, not just by posting something on the website. Also, please ask staff, a separate item, thank you, to correct the town's master response in the final EIR that lists many of the objections to Site H. It should also include the numerous environmental issues raised. The description of downhill problems must include detrimental impacts to the adjacent lagoon, the saltwater marsh and wetlands of Paradise Cove, as well as the protected species, both on the site and in the adjacent bay waters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon.
Hi, Gus.
Hey, welcome.
My name is Scott Miller, I spoke mostly concentrating on the safety issue a couple of weeks ago when you're here. And I have to say, that's kind of the deal breaker for me, I've, I've lived in Paradise K and we've had to deal with the danger of Paradise Drive for twenty years, we've been there. And when you hear sirens like we're hearing right now, we all hold our breath. My wife and son were in a head-on accident, it completely ripped the tire off the front of the car. Every time there's a siren, we all go, you know, is that somebody we know? Is that our children? Is that? It's not just another road, it's an extremely dangerous road. It's a solid double yellow line from end to end. And, you know, it's curves and there's a lot of bikes. Last week, Ken Royale was here, he was a paramedic for twenty years with a Tressel Glen. He couldn't be here tonight, but he could testify to how dangerous stretch of road that is. It's really would need a lot of infrastructure improvement. And it's, it is just a deal breaker, I'm not against development, but that site is just untenable. I don't think it would work, so the safety is a deal breaker for me. Thank you. Thanks for all your work to us.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Good evening.
Members of the town council, thank you for your time tonight, we know this is very arduous. My name is Cynthia Massey Kim and my husband James and I live at one oh three Trinidad Drive and I'm here to express our opposition to both the rezoning and development of ninety-three units at Site H. We kindly urge that you adopt the planning commission's recommendation to choose alternative, alternative three and leave the current zoning of Site H as is into the general plan. Jeff and Mary Ann Shannon have generously provided options in their letters on how the town can best limit our exposure to the builder's remedy. One that really struck a chord with me and my husband is, in addition to the ADUs, work towards annexing Site J, the twenty-seven acre winter property, which seems like a win-win situation. The property owner is willing and this could be a viable solution for both the downtown residents and the communities along Paradise Drive. Four five seventy-six took, I think, a little over a year to be annexed. I am not familiar with the annexation process, but can the town work with Lafco to expedite, to work and create a solution for all? Site H is not suitable for high density development. The planning commission already once determined what they thought was the appropriate zoning for this lot. Seven units, but realistically four due to the existing constraints. Safety has been an ongoing topic we've all been talking about. The safety of my own children, cyclists, commuters are utmost important. Paradise Drive is way too narrow and windy, this will become a big safety hazard. It is ironic that even Mr. Crandall attempted to create an easement into Paradise K for the safety and convenience of his own family and friends. I think that's pretty telling. We also submitted photos that capture some of the drainage that flowed from Site H into the bay. I wish I could show you all the videos our community has collected from different vantage points of all the drainage and discharge on a rainy day, it is alarming. The town's municipal code Title Six, Chapter Twenty-eight protects against erosion and runoff. So I ask, who's going to be responsible for the drainage and the culverts that run through his property? Number five, I think there was a retired firefighter, his name is Ken Royal, who actually said something really important at the planning commission meeting two weeks ago. He mentioned that there were two hydrants on the road and before you rezone and include Site H, shouldn't there be fire safety measures be vetted before this happens? In conclusion, we ask that you. In conclusion, we ask that you exclude Site H from the general plan. And you please consider the viable alternatives that have been presented for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Masterpin.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jim Neese. I'm contractor. I live, building contractor. I live at the corner of Taylor Road and Paradise Drive. Our property happens to be one of the few properties on that side of Tiburon. We take about sixty percent of the watershed that comes off the top of Ring Mountain, comes down through our property. And over the years, in the eighteen that we've been living here, we've had issues with our drainage infrastructure that was built by the Army Corps of Engineers prior to our taking ownership of that. And I can tell you from personal experience, every year, the maintenance that goes into it as a builder and knowing what's involved in just cleaning out our culvert. It's annual and it's a lot of work. And when I go to get help, when it backs up on the street and it's flooded two of my downhill neighbors, which then I'm responsible for and have been responsible for on two different occasions. I've had to call the town, then I've had to call the county, then the county has to call Caltrans. And my question simply is, on any infrastructure that goes on this road, who will be responsible, A, for this? Because currently it's not really clear. I don't think it's a roadway that the town of Tiburon has the means in their DPW department to want to handle the infrastructure that will go in. So that's one of my points. And my other point relates to a top drainage is the infrastructure of the highway build out that would be required in that turn lane. No one, no one's even spoke to this in the last two sessions that have had here. And I keep raising the point of the, what's called the municipal right of way. So on my property, as you come down Paradise Drive and you make a left hand turn to go up to Taylor, up to the top, we do have a turn lane, a separate lane. As you're waiting for cars to pass through and everybody spoke about the safety, spoke about the volume of vehicles. So by adding more vehicles to the roadway, you're going to need a separate turn lane, which is that section of area and the roadway is already challenged as it is for bikes, the whole bit. There's not the infrastructure, in my view, and the width of that road there to create these rights of way. So I don't know that that section has even been vetted to know that that could even, is possible to do. And then my third point is, in reading all of the responses that have come out through the town, what I have noticed in this, and no one seems to have spoken about either, is that district is considered a wooly district. And I know the classifications that go into building on a site is classified as a wooly site. So that coupled with the road infrastructure, coupled with the drainage complications that take place on that section of roadway, seemed to me that an infrastructure of this size and, and scale wouldn't even be able to happen anyway. So, but what would be nice to know or get an answer from is, who does bear the responsibility of the roadway, infrastructure and maintenance at, at, at the cost of any development? I'm not saying, don't develop Site H to the degree, develop it, don't develop ninety three units on it. But who bears the responsibility of that roadway? Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Robbins, two oh seven Paradise Drive in the Bayside area. I want to significantly agree with a gentleman who used to be on the design review committee about Nantucket, ever having been there until four years ago. They have done a masterful job with it. It is no more wealthy than this community, yes. Secondly, I do want to agree that H should not be six hundred and some odd units or whatever they're proposing. It makes no sense whatsoever, ninety. My son, my wife and I moved here a year ago from Berkeley. I specialized in land use planning as an attorney for years. And thank goodness, I'm no longer doing that. I feel for you, your staff, your consultants and the rest, what you have to go through. This is a town and my wife and I moved from Berkeley over here because of children in Marin. Son, daughter-in-law and two children live on Paradise Drive. I try never to drive it. It is everything that it has been said in the last two meetings that I've attended. The traffic in and out here that the first speaker spoke about, it requires a lot of planning. Kids were in, grandkids were in both of the grammar schools there. And you have to take your time to get in and out. My wife and I do that now by counting the number of pickup trucks that are coming out of town at a certain time. And thank God, they all have jobs. And most importantly, can I ask, has city attorney or staff ever met with the people in Sacramento, the HCD people? Do you actually meet with them? And I have to direct that through you. I apologize.
What's the answer to that? This is the question.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just curious about that. Because I couldn't agree more with the statement that opened the meeting. Aggressive example of government overreach. It is absurd. Thank goodness I didn't have to deal with it in that day.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins.
Hi there. Thank you for having all of us. My name is Kim Gordon and I live at two four five Trinidad Drive in Paradise K. I'm just going to touch on the safety one more time. I was the first person to arrive to the horrible car accident of the Brady Boys, the teenage boys that went off of Tiburon Boulevard. And in the course of doing my research following that, about looking into guardrails, conversation with Jim Fraser or two, and then the county, I learned that that wasn't the first car to go over. That was actually the third. I believe there were no casualties in any of these wrecks, but one of which was a school bus. So I urge you to consider all that has been put forth to you tonight, that the safety element of this is of utmost importance. People are not going to stop speeding. I hear the screeching sounds on a weekly basis as I, my house resides just under the most curvy part, right near where the Brady Boys went over. So please take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Did I say there was one more person who wanted to speak or is that? Okay. Oh. Okay.
My name's Jonathan Gaskin. I actually sent in a long letter, so I won't belabor it too much. I did want to echo what people have said. I live on Mateo Drive, right above the hairpin curve. I have personally called the police when people have gone off the road there. I have personally driven people to the hospital who've been driven off the road there. And one of the things I think has perhaps been missed because we all know it, there's no possible way to increase the infrastructure and build out a two lane road, you know, that two lane road into anything more. It's literally this, you know, there's either drop off or a hill. There's no possible way you can make it big enough to fit ninety three units and all the additional cars and all the additional things. And I agree, nobody wants to see huge density downtown. But the reality is if you put high density out on Site H, those people aren't going to have anything except cars as an option. And so we're going to have all of the things we've talked about as a parade of horribles. You know, I live there. It's the real downside of living on the backside. My kid can't walk anywhere unless he wants to walk up Ring Mountain and over Ring Mountain and come down. Because there's no sidewalk, there's no possibility to put sidewalk in. I'm a cyclist like many people. And frankly, there's no possibility to put in a bike lane anywhere along there. But one thing I wanted to return to is what Jeff started with, which is we're at a point now where we're trying to put something in that will get HCD compliant approval. And I think that alternative three is where we want to go. People have said you could change it later down the road and we could substitute. And I think that's true. I think we really do have a lot of people here and I've heard video evidence and other things that would really oppose what Tiburon put in and would oppose it at the state level and with HTC and say that Site H is not suitable. And it would really be a downside for the town if that happened. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin.
My name is Kathy Silverfield. For over a year, I attended meetings, wrote countless comments, read volumes of documents, spent hours discussing the housing element, general plan twenty forty and EIR. We put forth our defense to preserve the best of downtown Tiburon. We even compromised and accepted a three story height limit on buildings and a population increase in downtown alone of over one thousand people. We dread the worsening of a bad traffic situation. We cannot really envision dealing with a major catastrophe with such a concentration of people in one place at the tip of a peninsula with one exit on a road that has one lane each way. How much will it really help if both lanes go to the exit, in the exit direction with one thousand plus people added to the current population? We pretend, we pretend the character of Tiburon will not change if we have three story buildings replacing the boardwalk, shopping center and Charke's Deli to Petite Left Bank on one side and Chase CBS Bank of America and the parking lots on the other side. The post office could also be replaced. Some say, live with change. It won't hurt if we sit at Rustic Bakery and a three story building blocks our view of the hillside and its open space. So what if we stand at the roundabout where Tiburon Boulevard turns into Paradise Drive and no longer see just trees beyond the Petite Left Bank? Today, we see just trees because the one story and few two story buildings are set way back from the street to allow parking. In the future, we may stand at the roundabout and overlook the trees that are dwarfed by three story buildings built right up to the sidewalks. With all of this, what will happen if we add ninety three units and have a four story height limit with a possible state allocated bonus of a fifth story? And as someone said, we have a slippery slope. How many stories will we keep adding? Imagine walking down Main Street and Tiburon Boulevard with twelve hundred plus more residents. Sometimes, as it is, the sidewalks are so narrow, two people walking in one direction cannot pass one or two other people going in the other direction without stepping off the sidewalk to make room. The number of housing units that the housing element plan allocates is calculated from the low end of the allowable density proposed for rezoning. If another story is added and density is increased from thirty to thirty five units per acre to forty to fifty units, are we really talking only five hundred and twenty seven units? Some say an increase in population of twelve hundred plus people in a corridor of three to five story buildings will revitalize downtown Tiburon. The question is how? Without a visual representation of the future downtown, it is very difficult for me to imagine anything but an ugly, ordinary town that is trying to be like an urban city.
Can you conclude your remarks, please? It's been three minutes.
I'm almost, in conclusion, we ask that the housing burden be shared across Tiburon and not concentrated downtown. Please don't turn downtown Tiburon from the extraordinary to the ordinary.
Thank you. So I believe we, do we still have people that are online that want to speak? So if you could start letting them in. Yeah, thanks. So the, again, just to remind those people online, once you're let into the room, you'll have three minutes to speak after you state your name. Thank you.
We're going to start with Julie Jacobs.
Good evening. My name is Julie Jacobs and I live in downtown Tiburon. I had an appointment in Corder Madera on Tuesday, April twentieth at four in the afternoon and I left home at three twenty, thinking I was going to be early. I soon discovered that traffic was backed up on Tiburon Boulevard all the way to the library and not moving. So I would miss my appointment if I were to wait. I turned around and took the Paradise Drive route along the backside of the Tiburon Peninsula, expecting to find more backed up traffic. To my utter and complete astonishment, there was no traffic at all and I made it to my appointment on time. It was a startling reminder of the dangers faced by downtown residents alone caused by the traffic backups and choke points along Tiburon Boulevard between Mar West and Tressel Glen. And that's under current circumstances without adding new residences downtown. If I had been trying to escape a wildfire or tsunami or seeking emergency care for a severe heart attack, a stroke or a traumatic injury, I likely would have died that afternoon. This is a safety imperative for including the Paradise Tribe property and the housing element and the general plan as previously approved by town council. Other reasons including, for including the Paradise Drive site relate to Tiburon having already missed the deadline for certified a housing element and our vulnerability to the builder's remedy applications under state law, which I've written about in my written comments. The last reason to include the Paradise Drive site is that all three of the possible sites for significant housing to meet the RENA allocation share safety, natural and environmental risks and other serious issues. That includes the Blackfield Drive Cove property, the Paradise Drive property and downtown. HCD has previously rejected our housing element in part for not spreading affordable housing throughout town. The best way to mitigate risks and to get our housing elements certified is to share and spread the sites for new housing rather than concentrating it all downtown. Please do that tonight. Please allow our town to share the challenges posed by our responsibility to add more housing and end our vulnerability to the builder's remedy. Thank you for your hard work, patience and your very kind consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you.
Next is Ann L.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Libin. I live on Mateo Drive, just off of Paradise Drive. And the main point I think that the town council needs to consider is what was the reason that the regional housing allocation put so many houses in Tiburon? And the reason was it's a high resource area. Well, where are the high resources? They're not on the backside on Paradise Drive. There's no mass transit. No one can walk anywhere. There are no stores. There are no schools. There's no library. The high resources are downtown. That's where there is walkable, bikeable access to stores, the library, to schools. Sending a kid on a bike on Paradise Drive, as you've heard, is a fool's errand. I know that change is hard for this town. I've lived on Mateo Drive for thirty five years. Before that, I lived on Mar East for three years. I remember when what is now Point Tiburon was a gravel lot. Point Tiburon took away some views from the bayfront of the hills. It stressed some people out, but it has turned out okay and the Bayfront Park is quite nice. I think that the town, the planning commission and the design review people can also manage to make the changes to downtown that are now warranted work. It'll be, it'll be a change, but I think that the town can live with it. It will certainly improve mark, the market available for the businesses that are downtown that are not doing so well. The other thing I'd like to comment on briefly is The other thing I'd like to comment on briefly isn't exactly the housing element. It's the safety element. Everybody has talked about how dangerous Paradise Drive is. The reason it's so dangerous is that no one enforces the 25 mile per hour speed limit. And it's about time that on Tiburon's share of the road, the Tiburon Police step up and make sure people are not driving so fast. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Libin.
Next is Jill Barnett.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Okay, thanks. My name is Jill Barnett and I am a Belvedere resident. But I've come here to your meeting because you're talking about adding all of this housing in downtown Tiburon. I'm hoping that you take into account the fact that Belvedere has been required with RENA numbers to create 160 new housing units. So add that to your 600 that you are basically putting down in downtown Tib... You want to put in downtown Tiburon plus 160 from Belvedere. And I think you're going to have way more housing than can be accommodated. So that's my first point. Secondly, perhaps you should do like we tried to do in Belvedere to ask people if they wanted to put ADUs at their homes so you could spread out the housing. That would, I think, help. Third, I was just in LA this weekend looking... I mean, it's incredible what three and four-story buildings are like. I don't think everybody has a concept of how tall and big those buildings are. And it's ridiculous to think that you would put all of that down in downtown Tiburon. My suggestion is, as some of the other speakers have said, to band together with other cities and call Mark McGuire, who's our senator at the state, as well as Representative Donley, and express our concern about the housing and the RENA numbers and HCD and what they're trying to accomplish. I'm not sure whether you know that there's a number of cities such as Huntington Beach that are suing the state. And I think that you should band together with some of these other cities and do exactly that. Another suggestion is to join Catalyst at C-A-T-A-L-Y-S-T-S-C-A.org. It's a statewide grassroots network of community volunteers and leaders and elected officials who are trying to promote solutions for this affordable housing problem. That's it. That's like what I'd like to add. Thanks for letting me jump into your Tiburon Town Council meeting.
Anybody else?
Next is Lenny Echols.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. My name is Lenny Echols. We've lived on the Tiburon Peninsula for about 27 years now. Hearing different groups battling for the commonality of safety is really compelling. And wherever we're going to put housing, we need to consider safety. That's the priority. The two-lane road on Tiburon Boulevard is a challenge now. It sounds as though the road out of Paradise Cay is a challenge. And wherever is safety, I think... I don't want to use the word Trump, but Trump's other issues. So please consider that. And the other issue is affordable housing we definitely need. But when we're going to trade safety issues for a developer who's considering 93 units, only 10 of which are affordable and the other a market rate or above, it's not a good trade. So thank you for everything that you're doing. We appreciate it. We are very concerned. And again, safety is our top priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Echols. Any more hands raised online?
Seeing none.
Great, thank you. So at this point, I'll close public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion. Does anyone on council need to take a quick break or is everyone ready to go? Okay, great. Please, go right ahead. Are you asking to speak? Please, Mayor Fredericks.
So let me sort of roam through this, including addressing some of the suggestions. This whole housing policy, from my point of view and what I was doing, began to be generated at the level that electeds who were involved in legislative matters were aware back in 2015. That's when the policy started being put together and it included sort of a prerogative that high resource communities should bear a larger burden of the housing. And a high resource community was a community where the residents had high-paying jobs and where the schools were good. It didn't have to do with the neighborhoods. It had to do with the boundaries of the whole jurisdiction. At that time, the electeds who were elected at that time did go to Sacramento and sometimes even invited our representatives, including Senator Mike McGuire, to talk to us about these things because it didn't make sense for the models to assign the housing numbers based on resources of individuals rather than available land. Right? So I think calling it an abominable state requirement might just be an understatement because if... Because if you increase density in a town with very little buildable land and that land that is there is difficult because of the topography and other legacy constraints, you're not going to get the best bang for the buck in creating housing. But we're stuck with it. That's it. I think we're running with great concern about the builder's remedy. I think some of the notions about what is going on is driven by, as I think someone mentioned, HCD's demand that we disperse the housing and not concentrate it in one particular place. There's no magic site. From my point of view, our priority is to reduce the risk of a builder's remedy. The winter site, that will have use to us maybe in the future for no net loss kinds of situations. But waiting for it to be a next just increases the risk of a builder's remedy coming down the pike. And that will affect all of us because we will have very little say in certain projects of certain dimensions and how we can constrain them. So having said that, I have sort of exhausted what I can say. I want to tell you that in the future, there is even more coming down. When you worry about the roads and the infrastructure, the town doesn't deliver all those services. We're a small town. We don't deliver water. We don't deliver certain things. But there are things where we can apply for grants. However, they don't cover all the costs, for example, of our roads. And when a big project comes down the pike, we often shift to the developer fees to cover the impacts to the community as a whole, like roads and transportation. There have been bills that are proposed that will limit the town's ability to shift those kinds of costs to the builders. And that's just an example of how we are really under the gun and where I, and I can't speak for my fellow council members yet, am really concerned about the risks if we don't self-certify as soon as possible and self-certify with a site that meets HCD's current comments, which is to disperse the density.
Great, Councilwoman Raffey. Councilwoman Waller, go ahead. I didn't see her.
Okay.
I'll go after John.
So first, I'd like to say that Councilmember Fredericks, that was beautifully explained and stated. So I really appreciate your comments. So first of all, I want to address the situation that we're in a little bit. I think Alistair wonderfully, but I just want to focus on a few things to give you a sense of where we're at. I would describe the state requirements as brutal. And the reason I say that is if you take a look at what has happened, you know, without looking at individual communities closely at all. And although there have been legislative components, this is mostly an administrative set of actions at HCD and in the governor's office. But what's occurred is that, first of all, in the last cycle, there was a need for... That was identified by HCD, 1.2 million new housing units. And in this new cycle, despite the fact that a lot of housing was built, the new number that was generated was more than double, it's 2.5 million. So the first thing that happened is that the amount of housing that's being sort of required by Sacramento to be zoned for more than double. The second thing that happened is what Alice was describing, which is, I think the shorthand that I would put it is, there was a decision at some point, whether political or otherwise, to push housing out of cities and into suburbs. That's basically what it amounts to. So we here are feeling extreme pain in Tiburon. I think those folks who say that we should be working with other communities are exactly right in that that same pain in its own different ways is being felt in all of these suburban communities up and down the state. Our housing number last time, our housing target, was 78. Now it's 639. So the change, you know, it's almost tenfold, right? And we can't just ignore the requirement and say, we're not going to do it. And, you know, we've all alluded to the builder's remedy as kind of this boogeyman. You know, this terrible thing that would happen. But I just want to explain that everything that you're concerned about the town allowing would be on the table for the builder's remedy with no constraints at all. It would mean that we would lose discretion to limit projects in any way other than to comply with kind of very minor objective standards that are already existing in our code. So if you're concerned about Site H, if you're concerned about downtown, whatever you're concerned about, the builder's remedy would allow that to be built with almost no supervision from the town. So the builder's remedy isn't just this theoretical problem. It actually is worse than any of the things that we could approve tonight. Right? So we have to avoid that really at all cost. The second thing I'd like to say is that, and this was something that I learned kind of midway through the process that really shocked me. And that is that there are a very limited number of sites that qualify under the state rules to count as housing inventory sites. This is something that Deena, our community development director, taught me. But basically, they have to be of a certain size in order to count. And so the sites exist downtown, Site H, and then a couple of the sites that were identified before, like the Cove or the Baptist Church, these other locations. And the strange thing about this process is that in order to consider them viable sites, HCD requires the owner to say they might be interested. So all that it takes to take a site out of contention is for the owner to say, no way, I'm not doing it. And so that, for example, happened with the Cove. So people, I just want to... I want everyone to understand that the Cove isn't not on this list because we decided it shouldn't be on the list. The Cove is not on the list because its owner said they weren't interested. And therefore, that site would not be considered by HCD. So we have a very limited number of puzzle pieces to play with to get 639 housing units cited. So what does this mean? This means there's going to be great pain no matter where we put the units. And what we're doing here is what the mayor said at the beginning. We're trying to identify the... It's, you know, everyone is going to feel pain. No one's going to like the outcome, but we're trying to come up with the most sensible, least painful alternative for the town. And the truth is that unless something changes, and I'm going to address this at the end of what I say, but unless something changes in terms of what the state is doing, Tiburon, after this is over, Tiburon will not be the same, no matter what we do. And so there is, I completely agree and I want to reiterate what we started talking about. And I was saying a year ago, we need to look at all the levers. And I'll get to this in a minute, but we need to look at litigation. We need to look at legislation. And we need to also protect ourselves against the builder's remedy by reaching, by approving something tonight. A number of you, this happened for very many of you, were listing very smart, very thoughtful comments about what... You know, who's going to pay for the road improvements? Who's going to ensure that there's safety? Who's going to do all these things? How are we going to ensure that the site is safe if we were to develop Site H? The answer is not great, but the answer is this. And please chime in, town attorney, if I get something wrong here. But SEQA still applies. The Environmental Quality Act still applies to any development that's proposed here. We're not allowed to use SEQA to reject a project if it contributes to the overall housing goal. So that means it's not as protective as it would be in a normal situation. But the job of SEQA is to list all the significant impacts and force the developer to, and the town really, to mitigate them as much as possible. So all of the issues that you guys are raising now about either downtown or Site H, which need to be addressed, this isn't the last bite of that apple. Eventually, presumably, a developer will propose something. It'll have to go through the SEQA process. We'll identify risks and we'll try and reduce them as much as we can. So a lot of the questions that you've asked are deferred. They're not decided tonight. But you should know there is a process to identify them and minimize them to the extent that it's possible. So I guess two final points. One is I do support, after a lot of thought, and I understand that this causes a lot of pain to a lot of people, but I do support the alternative that includes Site H. I do it because, not because I think it's a good idea, but because I think there's only so much our downtown can take. And that if anyone had said two years ago that we were contemplating allowing zoning for three-density multifamily housing up and down Tiburon Boulevard all downtown, we would have been run out of town. And here we are contemplating exactly that because of what the state is requiring. I don't think going up to four or five stories is... I just think that that's too much. I also don't think that safety, while I know safety is a real issue for Site H, I think safety is also, as was pointed out at the very end, is a very real issue for downtown. And, you know, the first thing you have to look at is evacuation route. I mean, how can we possibly evacuate now, much less with 1,000 more people? So I'd like to end by saying I think we need to do this to protect the town from the builder's remedy. I do think we need to continue and have been, but I think we need to continue vigorously exploring our options in terms of banding with others and litigating or seeking policy changes or legislation. With regard to litigation, I think it's crucial for us to get our own housing element approved and certified before we start attacking HCD. I don't think they would look very kindly on our proposal if we were simultaneously suing them in court. Some communities in Southern California have tried this and their results have been very predictable and not good for them. So I think litigation is definitely something that we're all thinking about, but I think... I think litigation is definitely something that we're all thinking about, but I think it's premature. And then finally, in terms of legislation. This is something that. As I said, it's mostly been done at an administrative level, so communicating with the governor's office is always. Important and needed, there is an initiative, I don't know if I support it. But there is an initiative called Our Neighborhood Voices that you might want to look up online, depending on how you're feeling about this. Which would eliminate basically all housing decisions from the state and bring them all back to a local level. It is something that. Didn't get enough signatures last year. I don't know what's going to happen this year, but it is another way to try and look at this issue at a state level. Okay, so that's, that's, those are the points that I have to make. I'm sorry, this is such a difficult night, and believe me, it's. It's kind of hard to believe that we're at this point, but that's, those are the points that I wanted to make to all of you tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much. I wanted to start off by thanking each and every one of you for coming and speaking tonight. This type of public participation is what makes our decisions better, and it's what makes Tiburon really, really great. I want to take a second to thank our staff and our consultant. This has been a two-year process, and our community development director, Dina Tassini. Our consultants. And also our town attorneys, because they have had to dissect what is. Brand new and very, very imperfect legislation. And I want to take a moment to thank them as well as our town manager and our town clerk, and whoever else I left out, I'm really sorry. So, you know, I want to say when, when this came to us. And we were told we had to do six hundred and thirty nine units. Of housing and our first housing was at, John said sixty, seventy, seventy-eight. Was our prior allocation from the state. I was actually mayor, and some of the questions tonight were, well, we need to fight aggressively, we need to do everything we can. And I'm here to tell you, we did, we appealed, I appealed, I appeared before. The state organizations and like every other single city and county, we lost. And I support affordable housing, that I was not opposed to affordable housing, but I said. Six hundred and thirty nine units going from seventy-eight to six hundred and thirty-nine. Was not something that this community could support. In addition, the, the housing that is being created is not all affordable. There's a lot of high-end housing that is being created here. That is not going to help low-income individuals be able to move into our community, and I do support. You know, a community where we have opportunities for people to come and move in. That may not be able to spend, you know, a couple million dollars on a house, so I support the low-income housing, I don't think this law. Is going to actually accomplish what it was intended to do. I also think we received the allocation of the six hundred and thirty-nine in part. Because of the fact that we have a ferry. And we were seen as a high resource area, and there was a certain definition that they used that really doesn't fit this community. And I, I wish I could tell you that anything we do tonight is going to make you happy, but it's, it's just not, it's not going to make us happy. You know, going to three stories in downtown Tiburon, going and, and having a site, Site H. You know, none, none of us want to put. It's actually, I won't, I won't get into the specifics of it, but it's not six hundred and thirty-nine, we have to actually plan for more. And actually allow building on more in case HCD takes some out, we have to propose with a buffer. So that's why tonight you heard people talking about numbers that are higher. I want to talk for a minute about the safety concerns. Because I'm very concerned about the safety on Paradise Drive. I'm also concerned about the safety, you know, from downtown on Tiburon Boulevard. And, you know, I commit to you tonight, whether you live in Tiburon or whether you're in the part of Paradise. K that is not within Tiburon, so basically whether you're voting for me or not. I commit that I will help with the county or the town. Or whoever is designated to provide infrastructure in the future, whether it's on Paradise K, whether it's downtown. I will help work with that to make sure that things are safer. In addition, I noticed there was something brought up about an enforcement issue. Twenty-five miles per hour on, on Paradise, I'm happy also to speak with our department about that as well. I did hear some, some great ideas, and I read all of the letters that were submitted. And, you know, the, the winter property, I wish it was already annexed into Tiburon. And. You know, the way that the HCD counts housing, we can't actually count anything that is not within Tiburon. We're not allowed to do that, that's how, how they have it set up. I also heard a lot of good ideas about ADU outreach and making sure that residents and. You know, in, in Paradise, non-residents of Tiburon, your, your ADUs will still count, but they'll count for the. For the county of Marin. So I think those are some great ideas. I'm very concerned about the builder's remedy constraint. This has been the end of a two-year project. Or, or longer when legislation first started out. But this is not the end of, of this. And, you know, whatever the council decides to do tonight, I just want to let everyone know that I'm committed to help. And to help with the safety and other concerns that are going to arise, no matter where we put everything.
Thank you, Councilmember. So before I get to addressing the big issue at hand, I just want to mention one quick thing that. The attorney for the property owner. At Site H submitted a letter suggesting some changes to the EIR language. And I thought that the language solidified some of the concerns that Mr., is it knees or nyes? Knees raised in terms of like, making sure that mitigation method efforts were, were sensible and effective. And so while I'm speaking, if you guys want to think about whether you think it makes sense to incorporate that language. Because it, I thought it strengthened the case of, but, but, okay, I go ahead to.
Has the language been presented to our town attorneys? Yes, and what do they, what would you like to say about the language?
The language, the language is acceptable, it's a policy decision whether you want to include it or not, it will not re-trigger any sort of recirculation. And it goes to, I think with the mayor saying what was the intent of the original EIR.
Okay, great, and then. Mayor Ryan, I did have a few more comments, when, I can do it when you're done, actually.
Okay. Were you going to ask a question?
Yes, there was another language proposal from him.
I didn't know, I thought we were just. I don't know.
I think that's the ones.
Read them specifically so everyone knows what we're talking about.
So I'll talk and then we'll read them and then everyone, so. So again, I want, I want to echo what a lot of people here have said tonight, and I'll start by saying thank you to everybody for participating. I, I love the depth of the, of the input, and I loved how it sort of engaged everyone's problem solving efforts, and it was. I was constantly impressed over the last year, frankly, of. All the thinking that went into this from everybody, not just in the room but in town. And so the number of times I had to go to Dean and be like, hey, this seems like a great idea, what do you think? And so I appreciate all of your engagement and your input. And one thing that Councilmember Wellner said that I want to touch on is, is the, what some people brought up about litigation, and, and I think he's totally. Spot on there with respect to us keeping an eye on the litigation that other municipalities are pursuing. We have an actual slight advantage there in that Southern California is a year ahead of us in this process. So to the extent that they're able to prevail on certain issues, we have a good roadmap. So that is irrespective of what we do tonight, that is never off our radar, and, and, and I think all of us would agree that that. That, and have said at various times that that is very important for us to keep an eye on. So to just briefly sum up the input that we heard tonight about Site H in particular, you know, there, there were sort of three issues. That were raised, one is safety, one is sort of engineering and infrastructure, and then the third one is other, that I'll touch on in a second. And, you know, I, I. The, the safety issue is, is obviously incredibly important, and. You know, there are some incredibly horrible stories from, from happening from there that we don't want to exacerbate. That being said, it, you know, there are, if with five hundred new units downtown. As Councilmember Wellner said, the, the probability of evacuating in an emergency from downtown just becomes. Swim, like that's, there is not, you're not driving out of town anymore, you're, it's, because the traffic is already ridiculous leaving downtown, so. You know, when I think about this. I feel like we have, you know, in a vacuum, putting ninety-three units on Paradise Drive is, is crazy with respect to safety. But when you think about what we're already sort of doing to downtown. Proportionally, it might not be perfect, but it's not, in my mind, crazy, and it's. So that's where my brain was on the safety issue, and adding units is not good for anybody anywhere in terms of safety, like you can never. Argue that you're making the place safer by, by jamming traffic in and adding cars to the roads, it's just, it's. Inconsistent with logic, if you're, if you think you're making the place safer, so it's just a question of proportionality that I'm, that I'm dealing with. And I, I really appreciate Councilmember Frederick talking about the no net loss with the. Property that we could add to Site J that we might annex in the future. But the reason I bring that up now is because the, the third element, the other comments, and I really appreciate Mr. Shannon coming forward and talking about. The probability aspect. And I thought Councilmember Wellner handled it very, I thought about it very clearly in terms of. What does not. Ending the builder's remedy exposure do to us and, and how it. It makes all of the worst problems at every site available to everybody if we don't. Forstall the builder's remedy, and so again, back to Mr. Shannon's point, what is the root for us that is the highest probability of ending? The builder's remedy vulnerability, I think is, is, is paramount, and then. It's kind of, you know, I, the, I, I see arguments on both sides, right, but I think that. That everyone can appreciate based on what Mr. Shannon said, that it's, we're talking about probabilities here, there's no certainties, and everyone's just making their best estimation. Of what is the safest path forward for the town. At, at precluding really bad outcomes. And then the third thing that I do want to mention, as I said, in terms of categories of. Of, of input was, was the infrastructure and engineering. And I forget which one of my colleagues said it, but like, it, just the fact, this is a rezoning exercise, this does not. Take away engineering requirements, this doesn't make soil anywhere more. You know, able to handle the weight of buildings or, so it, and it, and it also does not. Obviate the influence of nearby agencies that have jurisdictions, so for example, if, you know, if BCDC ha- has the ability to. You know. Exact, you know, to, to basically. Have authority over certain things, this doesn't take that away, this just says. Builders can explore the possibility of building on these sites. So. So with those, so, so that's the way I've been processing the comments, and, and I. I don't know that I've heard from all the council members, but I, I think that I agree with Councilmember Wellner, and that it seems to me that the probability. Is best minimized in terms of getting rid of the builder's remedy, if, as if we. Leave Site H in there, and I will say that, you know, I watched the planning commission meeting, and normally I think we are inclined to. Appreciate, and I definitely appreciate the recommendations of the planning commission, I just think in this instance, they were very, they're kind of. They looked at it. By itself in a vacuum, and they didn't necessarily consider it proportionally to downtown, which I was surprised of, and they were just thinking about ninety-three units. They weren't thinking about six hundred and thirty-nine units and how this represents, you know, less than like twenty percent of them, so. I, I think that is why I would differ with the planning commission's recommendation. And in particular, Chair Williams, it was funny, she even said, she's like, you know, everybody's going to have to sacrifice, and some folks may have to sacrifice more than others. But then she said, let's put it all downtown, so I just thought that was, I, I was right with her on her logic, all the way up until she said the exact opposite thing from what she had. That her conclusion was different from what I thought her logic was, but. But again, like, I don't want to diminish their work, I know that they work very hard, and, and, and I appreciate all their efforts, but I would. I would think that we would reject their recommendation and keep the site agent. But. Yeah, Vice Mayor Frederick, please.
And, and this is just an addendum that was brought up by the mayor's. Request. To change some of the language about feasibility of mitigations. There, there is a request to. Change, to modify the description of Site. H. So that the language was taken from the Reed School site, which is due to the site's topography. Clustered buildings would be best suited for the site. This is something, if it doesn't cause any delay, I would propose, and if it does, I would drop it.
I, I have a question for council about that, if I may. The. This EIR is about zoning, is about, is about general plan and zoning issues. There eventually will be, if there's a project proposed, an EIR for that project, I presume. At that point, things like clustering or doing other specific things with regard to how the development occurs. Would be the subject of that EIR review, is that correct?
Any subsequent project would have to undergo environmental review, and as that project is proposed, the environmental review. Process will look at that project, so if it proposed in a clustering format, you'd have to look at that, but it depends on how the applicant submits the proposal.
Okay, so I'm just, I guess what I'm wondering, as we look at these, I, I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other, but I wonder if some of the. More detailed changes to the EIR with regard to, they're being proposed with regard to Site H. Could best be handled when a proposal is made for Site H?
Um, yeah, I, I'm agnostic, this change that I proposed. Is already in the EIR with respect to the Reed School site, I believe.
Yeah, isn't that correct? I thought that was just consistent with the Reed site. Sorry, I forgot my spot.
If, if I may, Mayor Ryan, excuse me, members of the council. So the, I believe that the language about the Reed School site and the clustering is in the housing element itself. And then there's a proposed modification to the VMT mitigation measures in the EIR.
Yeah. And, and so I think the language change was then to the housing elements description of the site, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Jack, did you, did you want to read that, and then I have something not related to say, so. Do you want to read the language now?
Sure. Nowhere to go.
Do you want me to?
I mean, but Vice Mayor Frederick said it.
We do have suggested language, if you'd like us to read in letter into the record and see if that is something that you would agree.
That sounds great, thank you.
Yes.
I'm gonna. So Christine O'Rourke is going to read into the record, the one that has to do with the housing element itself. And then Christina Irwin will read what has to do with the VMT into the record, so.
And when you say.
In the EIR.
VMT.
Yeah, is in the EIR.
I know, but what does that stand for?
Vehicle miles traveled, I'm sorry, I speak in acronyms all the time.
Okay, so there was another recommendation for language change in the, the most recent letter that the property owner submitted. We kind of wordsmithed it a little bit, this is our suggestion, is that we include, this is the. Description of Site H, it's on page eighty-eight. And it would be an additional sentence to the second paragraph, and it says, due to the site's topography and characteristics. Development should be clustered on the parts of the site with the fewest constraints.
In regard to the EIR regarding vehicle miles traveled, there was a suggestion to modify the language for mitigation measure three point fourteen dash two. The mitigation measure would now read. Um, the mitigation measure would now read um, with the addition of a particular clause, and I'll point that out when I get there. When the town receives an application for a project located outside of downtown Tiburon and subject to CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. It shall apply the screening thresholds for land use projects set forth in. Um, the office, Governor's Office of Planning and Research's technical advisory on evaluating transportation impacts in CEQA. If the project would exceed the screening thresholds or other evidence demonstrates a potentially significant VMT impact. The town shall require the applicant to prepare a quantitative project-level VMT analysis. If the analysis shows that the project would exceed the applicable numeric threshold of significance. The town shall require the applicant to prepare and submit a VMT reduction plan for town review and approval. The VMT reduction plan shall incorporate mandatory measures. Sufficient to reduce project VMT below the applicable numeric threshold of significance. And here is the added clause. And for residential development, shall indicate which of those measures, if any, can be feasibly implemented. By the proposed project. The VMT reduction plan may include, without limitation, a transportation demand management program. Uh, pedestrian bicycle or transit network improvements, car sharing or ride-sharing programs. Transit subsidies, telecommuting, or alternative work schedules and. And/or any other measures sufficient to reduce VMT below the applicable threshold. If that additional language is approved by the council or recommended for approval by the council. There would also be a, a, um, subsequent text change following the mitigation measure where we explain the effectiveness of the measure. And how it would be actually implemented. In that case. Um, essentially, we would add language, um. Uh, you want me to read the whole thing? Maybe?
Well, let me ask this. Is this language that is being proposed to be included in the EIR? More limiting of the development, less limiting of the development, or just descriptive?
The additional language in the measure itself is uh, descriptive and uh, indicates that um, for residential development. Um, we need, the town would make a decision about which measures, if any, can be feasibly implemented by the project. Subsequently, um, part of the discussion following the mitigation measure. Would say, since most of the residential development outside of downtown Tiburon would consist of single-family residential development. And accessory dwelling units and may include projects subject, subject to a ministerial streamlined review process. Much development outside of downtown Tiburon may not be subject to CEQA. Therefore, mitigation measure three point fourteen dash two would have limited use. In addition, most successful transportation demand management programs focus on employment sites, not residences. While transportation demand management and vehicle miles traveled. Reduction programs focusing on residential development are challenging to implement and monitor. And may make planned housing development needed to comply with state law infeasible outside of downtown Tiburon. Therefore, VMT reduction programs for residential projects can be implemented only to the extent that they are feasible.
Yeah. I, I'm just gonna stop you there. I mean, my, my view is that this is a level of detail with regard to modifying the EIR that we should not be examining tonight.
There. This, this language change will not affect the outcome of the analysis or the conclusions that uh, you have listed in the packet before you.
Okay. Yeah, could be donated, consider for, okay. Um, but did you have other comments about the bigger issue?
Um, I did, and I um, I just wanted to make some comments. Um, this is uh, the adoption of the entire general plan. Twenty forty, so my comments are not about housing, sorry.
Uh, I just say one thing. Cause uh.
Okay.
This is related to that. We would discuss this a little bit earlier. One question I have for the council, and I don't feel s- strongly necessarily about this, but since our discussion up to this point. And the public participation has been exclusively about the housing element and. It's getting late and we're not gonna, I don't think go into the other elements in any depth. Um. One possibility for us is to uh, limit our approval to the housing element and schedule a different night to discuss other aspects of the general plan. Um. I don't think that's an urgent need, but I think it would give those other elements a little bit more of their due since. They're important and they include things like the diversity element and the sustainability element. So it's a question for the other council members, if they would be open to that. I've already consulted with town council about. That not affecting the builder's remedy issue.
Yeah, I would like to discuss everything tonight only because it's, it's on our agenda and I think, you know. We have discussed a lot of these other elements and um, there's been a lot of public comment on that. I think people were most interested in housing. So I would like to be able to adopt everything tonight and discuss it tonight if possible.
I'm comfortable moving forward tonight as well, so, okay.
I agree. Um, okay, I'm back. Um, so we are adopting the entire uh, general plan this evening. And there are many, many other elements. Um, and actually Tiburon is, is setting, um. Yeah, Jack wants to say something. Go ahead.
I see, I see a bunch of people leaving. So by the way, I, if, for people who are leaving and anybody who's here, if you ever want to just reach out and talk about this. Individually, one-on-one, you can feel free to send us emails and ask to meet with us, and I can explain to you why I'm more optimistic than. Anybody else in this room about this later, but feel free to email me.
Okay, and, and ditto. We would all love to meet with you. I see everybody leaving. Um, so, so I wanted to go to some of the, so, some of the other elements. Um, Tiburon is actually. Uh, making history uh, tonight. Um, we are one of the only um, jurisdictions in Marin and almost anywhere. That is adopting a diversity, equity, and inclusion element. And that element will actually highlight the town's commitment to building a more diverse and equitable uh, community. And um, it's going to focus on equity, diversity, inclusion. Um, and environmental justice. So I'm very excited about that. There's not. There's, there's so few cities and towns that are doing this that um. We had to look far and wide for a consultant that could actually uh, you know, help us draft uh, this element. Um, the other uh, new element that is coming is our sustainability element. And that's also very exciting. Um, and I would say cutting edge. Uh, not a lot of communities have a sustainability. Uh, element, and it's how our town will provide a sustainable community. So things like reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Um, climate change, and these are all things that are in, in our general plan. And I just wanted to say how excited I am about that. Um, and I want to congratulate our staff. And our fellow uh, council members for having the vision to make sure that this uh, was part of our general plans.
Thank you. Any further comments? So um, at this point, we are asked to make two specific, uh, adopt two things that by motion, um. Does somebody want to make a motion that we can entertain?
I just lost it.
Um, I would um, make a motion to adopt a resolution of the town of Tiburon Town Council certifying. The final environmental impact report for the town of Tiburon General Plan twenty forty. Adopting CEQA findings of fact. And adopting a statement of overriding considerations and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
Uh, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, and we don't need to do a roll call vote, right? Um, so all in favor of adopting, say aye. Great, all opposed?
That's okay. Adopters, I make a motion that we adopt a resolution repealing the two thousand five general plan and adopting the general plan twenty forty. Including the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, twenty thirty-one housing element.
Uh, second, and a second page, Councilmember Wellner, thank you. Um, all in favor of approving that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously as well. Um, so that is the uh, conclusion of the meeting. Thank you all for coming and participating. I appreciate it. Um, good evening. We're adjourned.